Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 12, 2024. Would you all be kind enough to join me in the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. This is the first meeting of the month. And for the folks at home on the big screen, hopefully a big enough screen, we have the agenda for tonight. We will have the supervisor's report, which is a snapshot of the financial condition at any given moment. Clerk's report, we do have some announcements as they relate to our spring event calendar. Any public comments? And then we have a short agenda, a resolution to set a public hearing on local law A proposed, Chapter 143 zoning. The local law is proposes to have a temporary moratorium on certain types of development in certain areas in town. Then we have, the second item is a Restore New York grant. So to consider whether or not to apply for monies for an adaptation of the barn on Cooking Ham East into an agri business. That would be consistent with the overall project. And we're going to take a look at the fee schedules for the recycling center as we are sort of way below market and way below being able to balance our books on running that recycling center. We have a request for a new hire of groundskeeper. And then any other business before us. We also anticipate going into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. Okay, so why don't we jump right on in? Supervisor's report, folks, here we are. This is a snapshot at the conclusion of February, February 29th this year. And we started with an opening balance of $6,608,000 and change. We had receipts of three and a half million or so, dispersments of $2,478,000, or an ending balance of $7,696,000. This is that time of year where we receive your taxes. And thank you very much. We hope you feel you're getting good value for your town taxes. And you'll see that balance typically decline over the year, although this year will be slightly different because we do have some properties on Cooking Ham that will be selling off. Okay, and then we have our budget adjustments as proposed by Ann Conway, our bookkeeper. Were there any questions on that, folks? And our variance report. Okay, hearing done. Is there a motion to accept the supervisor's report?
Move.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Very good. We also have the town clerk's report. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the report, please?
The town clerk's report for the period of February 1st, 2024 to February 29th, 2024. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $4,570. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $35. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $90. Total state, county, and local revenues, $4,695.
Very good. We also have an abstract.
And I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 31609 to 31717, processed in the month of February 2024, and accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Okay, let's spring right into spring events. Motion to accept, I'm sorry. We always accept, it's a given. Thank you, Jacob. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you tell them, speeding around along?
Lots of good events.
Well, yeah, the events make me very excited, even though they involve a fair amount of work sometimes. So you'll all be receiving a mailing as you have each spring detailing the events that we have coming up this spring season. And so back by popular demand is E-Waste Day. That's Saturday, April 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. That's at the recycling center. This is very unusual for a municipality of our size to have this day. And I think it's a real value to our residents. We also have on the same day, time schedule a little bit different, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Repair Cafe. And that is at the community center as it has been for the last several years. Mend your broken but beloved items. We don't mend broken hearts, although I'm sure that'll be added at some point, right? Because we've pretty much got everything covered there. We will have on the website, if you want to check, the types of items that you can bring to be fixed at the Repair Cafe. And I brought a chair last time. It's the first time I actually brought something to Repair Cafe, which was very nice. And they fixed it. And it's just, it's really, it's great. Anything you can reduce is great. We used to call this the Free Rabies of Vaccination Clinic until people started giving us a hard time about getting rabies for free. So we now call it the Free Clinic Rabies Vaccination. That's the following day, Sunday, April 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Right here.
Right here at Town Hall. Did we decide this year you can be here with the four-legged friends on Sunday? I'm not sure I can come this year on that day. Okay, terrific. If you have not seen, Town Hall occupied by a lot of dogs and cats. You may want to bring yours by, so that's...
Last year you had 90 plus?
We had a lot. We had a lot. It was quite a cacophony here. So that's Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here at Red Hook Town Hall. One of my favorite days and one of those very popular bus time. And we're hoping for some like reasonable weather for a change. Drive electric vehicles demonstration. We'll have dealers and your neighbors bringing their electric vehicles. You get to test drive them. You get to, you know, ask lots of questions about it and see how charging works and so on and so forth, right here at Town Hall parking lot. And we hope to see you then. Cleanup Day. Boy, I wish Cleanup Day were today, frankly, because the roads really need to be picked up. But it turns out it's Sunday, April 21st, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. You just come, we supply you with everything you need, grabbers, gloves, garbage bags, and water. And then we'll give you pizza afterwards volunteering. It's a very fulfilling experience and makes the town look a heck of a lot better. Followed two weeks later by Arbor Day, May 4th, 2024. That's also here at Town Hall, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And as we have from time to time, we're happy to plug events also being put on by the village. Apple Blossom Day is done in coordination with obviously run by the Red Hook Rotary. They do that event with the assistance of Red Hook Village. And that is Saturday, May 11th, 2024. And if you are wondering, each and every year, what day is Apple Blossom Day? It turns out it is the day before Mother's Day, sometime later than that.
Robert, can I make a quick announcement about E-Waste Day in the CAC?
Okay, the CAC would like to make an E-Waste...
Yes, so the Conservation Advisor Council is looking for volunteers for the E-Waste Day. So as Robert described, it's a good event. There are going to be two shifts. People are welcome to stay for both. Mature kids are welcome, but be mindful of moving vehicles and sometimes distracted drivers. So the first shift, which is set up in the first half of the event, will be from 7:00 to 10:30 a.m. And then the second shift will be from 10:00 to 1:30 p.m. So they note that it's a great way for students to log volunteer hours and for adults, it's a good opportunity to make a difference. So if anybody wants to do that, bring work gloves, layers, rain gear as needed. It's a rain or shine event. So if you are interested in signing up, there's going to be information about it sent out to the town. But Jen Kavanaugh, who's a CAC member, would be the point of contact for that.
Terrific. And last year, and I think this year as well, Senator Inchi's office, I'll be able to speak one of these days, co-sponsored the event and sent staffers. So that was very helpful as well. For the folks at home, you'll be entering, just like you do to the recycling center. We do it on the highway grounds. And then we bring you out this way through the Town Hall parking lot. Okay, Volunteer Day to extend the Salt Hill Trails, though not this Thursday, apparently. Every Thursday thereafter, the next one, it looks like March 23rd, 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. So volunteers are hacking away, pun intended, on some of the small tangents where we're extending the Salt Hill Trails and making very good progress. As you know, Winnick received grant to put in the boardwalks. And this project, we hope, will be complete, the Salt Hill Trails, in the not-too-distant future. Okay, Blood Drive. It seems like there's always demand for a blood drive. And we thank the VFW and the American Cruisers as always. They're terrific about holding these blood drives. It's this Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's hosted by the Cruisers and the VFW host, and that's on Elizabeth Street. Very good. Those are all the announcements I have. Anybody else have any? Okay. Very good. Is there any public comment?
Is the volunteering, does that count as a community service type stuff?
I think it would.
Yep.
Absolutely. Okay. If your hands weren't occupied with the pen and the pad, you'd be raising it. Is that what you're saying? Count you in? Terrific. I think you'll enjoy it. It's actually a lot of fun. The E-Waste or the Cleanup Day, the really great family events too. I mean, we have people bringing their kids to... Anyway, hope to see you there. Okay, well, let's dive in. Agenda items. So first one is draft local law. So folks, if you've been following along in previous meetings, a couple of things. First, you know that we are eager. I think that's an understatement. We have been trying for some time now to understand, excuse me, what's involved with extending now that the sewer system is in place in the village, down through our commercial corridor. It's important, it's integral to whether or not the TNDCC in particular can realize its full potential. Whether those parcel owners, when they come in to develop the property, they need to factor in whether or not they're going to be servicing their lots by individual septics or by a community sewer. And so we are at that point now where we need to gather the support from the landowners in that area, determine whether we have that support. And, you know, if so, then we can understand, or if not, understand the implications on the zoning and what changes that we need to make to the zoning in that district. So we are at this time, so there is no confusion. We are calling for a temporary moratorium on applications in the TNDCC until such time as we understand whether or not it's feasible to establish the sewer district there. We are, in addition to that, and I'll go to the draft legislation. You heard from Deputy Supervisor Bill Hamel at our last meeting about how the state is about to issue new rules and regulations on a whole host and variety of wetlands and buffers to wetlands. And so as not to, one, have a rush of applications, two, to have a very difficult situation for our boards and also for applicants. We are calling for, until those rules and regs come out specifically, though the law itself has been adopted, and much of it will be in effect January 1st. We are calling for a temporary moratorium on applications within certain areas of wetlands, in particular within 300 feet of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation designated wetlands. We would encourage folks to take a look at their environmental resource mapper because they've mapped those areas and other areas to get some sense of what they're taking a look at. One of the provisions of this new law will be that the map itself will not necessarily be regulatory. It will be used as a resource, and then there'll be site-specific work that'll need to be conducted in order to determine whether or not there are important wetlands involved in a project. And the third area where we're calling for a temporary moratorium is on our farmlands in the agricultural business district. I'm sure you've been following along over the course of the last 20 some odd years. We've developed a very successful programs that have become the model, both in the Hudson Valley and New York State and elsewhere. The same is true of some of our zoning. We do recognize that we have more recently been in the position where we've had to actually acquire farmlands and in order to protect them. And so during the course of this moratorium, we're going to take a look at whether or not our zoning is really up to snuff and effective enough to, you know, protect those important resources as well. So that is the substance. We've got some backup information, as we did from the last meeting, on New York State and what they have as part of the legislation. So what we're doing tonight is entertaining a motion to call a resolution, sorry, to pass a resolution to establish a public hearing for our next meeting on proposed local law A, placing a moratorium on applications in the TNDCC sub-district, on applications for subdivisions in the AB RD3 and RD5 districts, and on applications affecting wetlands. And so that would be for March 27th. And I think we recall it for 7:35. Any questions? Folks, who has our schedule for the 27th? I think we'll be here for that. Any questions about the resolution to set the public hearing? I'd like to hear from the public on this. Okay, resolution number, Deanna?
Seven.
Seven. Dated March 12th, 2024. Establishing date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the Town of Red Hook a local law A proposed of 2024. An isimove. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion? All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine King?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have... Apologize for all the scrolling, if you're watching at home. Close your eyes for a moment so you don't get dizzy. Okay, so if you recall, with our Cooking Ham project, we have so many wonderful elements to it, some of which have already been realized, some of which are still in a stage where they're being developed, proposed, and we're reaching out to get grant funding. One of the elements of the development area, the small area, 12 acres, that have been set aside from the 218 acres, calls for an adaptive reuse of that barn that really hasn't been used for very much over the years. These beautiful barns, many of them, I know I have an older barn, have lost a lot of their utility. And this particular barn has really great bones and could be a wonderful agricultural-based business and commercial redevelopment project to go along with the single family and the multifamily that's proposed for that property. Restore New York is a grant program that could be available to us. RUCO believes that we should at least submit an application and will assist us with that. To receive monies, we'll be applying for over a million dollars in grant monies to adapt that into a wonderful commercial property. And so I've got a draft here, actually modified it tiny bit with some language, just referencing the rest of the project. And just for the board, just as a reminder, the letter of intent, if we want to do that, we need to do that by the 25th. So actually prior to our next meeting, that does not require a public hearing. But the application itself is due in May, on the 22nd, I believe that is. And there'll need to be a public hearing for that. So we've got a placeholder for April 24th for the public hearing related to that. There is a 10% match. RUCO would commit to making that match. And I think it's exciting. You know, one of the nice things about these grant programs is they actually like to leverage some of the funding. And as you know, we've applied to, RUCO has applied to the Mid-Hudson Momentum Fund for the infrastructure necessary for all of the housing and also for this commercial adaptive reuse of the Dutch barn. I think I have just a floor plan in there somewhere for the folks, yeah. So Dutch barn, two levels, often referred to as a bank barn. Ground level, 2,700 square feet. Upstairs, again, the same. Some more information about the program itself, the objectives, how to apply. Folks, any questions? All right.
Do we need to take action on that today at all?
We do, yes. We need to pass this resolution so you can authorize me to send this letter of intent. And then a more formal application gets developed over the course of the next two months. They just want to know who's applying initially, as often as the case. So we've got resolution number eight, dated March 12th, authorizing a letter of intent, also setting a public hearing for the Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Application. For the 24th, we should set this one at 7:35. It's our second meeting of April. An isimove, resolution number eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And Bill? Shall I leave you up, Bill?
No, it's okay, you have your votes.
We are, yeah, we have been to the benefit of our residents and because we'd like to think we're managing the taxpayer dollars as best as we can. We've been able to keep our fees associated with utilizing the recycling center at just way under market. And, you know, it's sort of come to the point where now, because we are running a deficit, that we need to take a look at raising, really just for the garbage. Obviously, we don't want to penalize folks for recycling it as a recycling center. But when you look at, for example, what the Town of Rhinebeck is charging and what we are charging, they're 250% higher on the small bags. They're, they just raised, they're $3 or 60% higher on the large bags. Interestingly enough, they don't make a distinction between a large 33-gallon or above bag and a contractor bag. And there's just a very large difference between what you can get in one and what you can get in the other. TJ had a suggested amount. Obviously, it'll close some of the gap that we have and all of the gap. But it could be a start for getting back to, you know, having smaller deficits on that. So the suggestion would be to have a small bag fee of $3, a large of $6, and contractor of $8. So 33 and a contractor's 50 gallons or above typically. So it might be at least proportional.
Well, keeping with what you just mentioned, I wonder if it makes sense to move the contractor bags to $9.
Okay. You know, a lot in a contractor bag and a lot of, right?
They're substantially bigger.
I'm fine with that.
Maybe it won't close the whole thing, but...
Yeah. Thoughts, Julia?
I'm comfortable with that.
All right. Bill?
Aye.
Not? Eve and Steve? Jacob?
He's fine.
All right. We'll keep the math simple over that one. Everything will be a bit...
369.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we amend our fees at the recycling center as it relates to garbage or refuse, as we love to call it, and to change it to be for small bags, $3, large, $6, contractor, $9. An isimove.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Aye.
Unforgettable. Thank you very much. Okay. Last but not least, we have a recommendation from our RUC department to hire a new groundskeeper, Dave Bryant. This is for a position that would fill in right now, but, you know, could conceivably be as much as 820 hours if it's a replacement. And we're happy to have people on.
We advertised this?
We did not. You know, John put the word out there. We might have on our website, actually. Yes, I think we did. I think we stopped using Indeed because it was so dang expensive to put these ads in. Indeed, no offense, indeed, but... Any questions? Obviously, everybody's on probation. Obviously, everybody's on probation as the policy is, so we welcome.
So I assume that this additional budget impact was not reflected in the, in last month's report, but would be in the future if we decided to forward it?
It will be if... It's a little tricky with the part-timers, so we budget a certain amount. We don't know if we'll actually need that whole amount. So when it comes painfully obvious that we need to raise that line, we will go ahead and raise that line in anticipation. But again, we don't know how many hours. Right now, it's just fill-in. It could become a, a replacement. So to, to answer your question, what it, what it looks like, we need to adjust the budget line.
Well, as I have been sounding like a broken record for many months now, I do think that-
Actually, that's really squeaky, a broken record. So you may, you may want to try it differently now, I'll tell you.
Well, we just really have significantly increased the workload for our rec department. So I do think it's important to add more capacity. And I think we should really look closely at that during the budget process for the upcoming year.
Yeah. Well, we're going to find out how much, you know, some of this maintenance is hopefully build it, trails, and so on and so forth, so it's relatively maintenance-free. But as you, as you so rightly point out, there's no such thing as a free trail.
No. And I mean, I think our, I think John has made it pretty clear that they're not prepared, nor do they have the right equipment to take on managing a lot of trails.
Right, the trail trails, right. I was talking about the Cooking Ham ones where they're essentially going to be-
Oh, yeah, that's different. But like the Winnicke trails?
Sure, sure.
They can't take those on.
And which is why we have, we so appreciate all the volunteers who come out and maintain, help us maintain and extend those trails. Well, folks, this-
Do we do the motion to do this?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Christine, would you make a motion?
I will make a motion to hire Dave Liant as a part-time groundskeeper as, at the rates outlined in this memo.
Professional groundskeeper.
That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a second? Thank you, Julia. William, before I forgot. All right, thank you. Jacob?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much. What, what else do we have? We just, we are going in Arbor Day, so we received, we, we spoke about Arbor Day, but we did receive notice. Jacob, would you like to tell folks what we received notice as, since you're pleased?
Yes. So recognition is a twenty twenty-three Tree City USA. Basically, what that means is that Red Hook is a community that makes planting and character is a priority. So we've been a member of Tree City, and recognize as a tree city for a number of years now. So it's great to keep that tradition going.
Sure. Thank you very much. Folks, this was a rather short meeting, at least for you all. We're about to entertain going into executive session to discuss a matter under negotiation. I'd like to thank you all for joining us. Isn't it wonderful? It looks like spring is, at least here. We've got this little yellow ball, apparently still exists and comes out occasionally. Have a good night. Stay healthy. And we hope to see you soon. At this time, I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss a matter under negotiation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Aye. Night, everyone. Thanks very much.